... The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scharf?
Here.
Hearn?
Yes.
Heim?
Yes.
Sudama?
Yes.
Service?
Yes.
Catchenhorst?
Yes.
Weispan?
Yes.
Consider approval for the meds of June 24th meeting?
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Weispan?
Yes.
Catchenhorst?
Yes.
Service?
Yes.
Sudama?
Abstained.
Heim?
Abstained.
Hearn?
Yes.
Scharf?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to open the conference room for consideration of approval on an preliminary QV of proposal and business part?
On move.
Scharf?
Yes.
Hearn?
Yes.
Heim?
Yes.
Sudama?
Yes.
Service?
Yes.
Catchenhorst?
Yes.
Weispan?
Yes.
Okay, so we're opening up a public hearing for the proposed business area, and we're gonna limit the comments to three minutes. If you have do look at comments, just say you would agree with whoever or whoever, and but you know, once a point is made, you know, we don't really need to hear it over and over. If you agree, disagree, whatever, just say, you know, I would like to, you know, agree with whoever or whatever, just to kinda move it along a little bit. So, we're gonna have an opening statement by the developer. And can we just go ahead? Yep, so you can go ahead and go ahead, yep.
(Inaudible)
You can speak to the audience or...
He should speak to the commission.
(Inaudible).
Please.
(Inaudible).
You should speak to the commission, and then anyone who has questions or comments will also speak to them.
I don't think they're gonna be able to hear him, that's the thing.
Yes, as long as you can, if you could.
All right. Well, I'd like to thank everyone for attending this meeting, for your interest in the project. I'd like to thank the village for giving me, petitioner, the opportunity to have this hearing. My name's Art Van Barren, Senior. I have my son Junior, Art Junior, and Warren Opperman, who's the engineer for the project. Well, I built the Trim Creek Industrial Park approximately 20 years ago. Dutch America was a small company in Dalton, we needed more space, and the result was, talking with the town, I put in a 20 acre park. I took seven acres for myself, and Dutch America has grown and filled that space up to this point. The park is also filled up with at least five businesses that leave. There's a lot of tax revenue that comes in from that park. I would estimate the area at 350,400 a year, I might be wrong, but I think it's in that area. Also many jobs, I believe at least 400 jobs that come into the park over a period of years. It's a nice clean park, there are a few problems with it. This new park, I don't suppose it'll be similar to that. There would be some improvements, the streets would be wider, 40 feet I believe instead of 30. And we'll divide lots, we'll keep it a little wider, we'll post the agricultural or anchor to over acre. Well, a number of years ago, Beecher's Master Plan, they had that area in our town be a business or industrial area, and I don't know how much of that is involved with these pieces in it. And the property also was put into the tip district a little over two years ago, and the village does that in order to try to encourage business to locate in the village. And it's also an enterprise zone. I'm not sure who runs that, I believe it's a government agency, I don't know if it's the county or the state. Guide 294 corridor enterprise zone, there's many benefits for business located in that zone, which is park, you have no sales stats and building materials in one of them, that's a big item. So, and as far as what benefits of the park could be, I would think that the taxes are high, I don't like to speculate on that, but I think it'd be over $900, actually actually tax dollars a day to tax highs for the park. Many, many jobs, I have no idea what to rank, but the park, yeah, the 20 acres is about 350,400 jobs, so this could be similar, it could be a little more, a little less. So, with the jobs, people come into town, a lot of people that live in the town that will work those businesses, people will come in, people that come in, a lot of tanks, eat food, groceries, gas, they spend money in town when they're here, it's the benefits of business owners, the village, pretty much sales stat, revenue, et cetera. So, that's really it, my introduction. I'd like to, this time, if you want, and Warren, Warren Opperman's the engineer for Schu, Schu Company, and he's gonna give a presentation, you folks own the park, all the, how it's gonna be put together, and it's also a set of covenants that's available to whoever wants and might leave.
Yes, my name is Warren Opperman, I'm Joseph Schuman Associates, civil engineers and land surveyors. A little bit difficult to see, but I'll point it out the best I can, on this board. Our company worked on this property back in 2005, when it was proposed to be residential development. Economy of 2007, right in that timeframe, 2008, things turned south, developer went away, and so obviously the property's set title for all this time. We were contacted by Mr. Van Barren to come in and assist him with laying out the proposed industrial park development, the business park. So, what we have here is approximately 110 acres from Church Road on the north. There's businesses that front onto Dixie Highway, so the property does not go all the way out to Dixie, but approximately 300 feet in from Dixie Highway, all the way up to the Union Pacific Railroad on the far west side, and then to a bank of lots, residential properties that front onto Miller Street. So, the property does not go all the way down to Miller either, there's residential down that sits on Miller Street. The church is a partially 300 by 300 foot parcel that sits right in here, so the 110 acres kinda surrounds the church all the way to the railroad, almost all the way to the Miller, Miller Street area. And this street just south of the easterly portion of the business park is Willow Street, there's residences that back up to the property that are on the north side of Willow Street. There's also property, residential properties, that are on the west side of Catalpa, that also back up to the residential property, to the business park property. The shaded area that you see here is the Trim Creek Tributary, that kinda basically bisects the property, if you will. And what the shaded area indicates is actually flood plain that covers part of Trim Creek, or the Trim Creek Tributary. So, the way that we've laid the park out, because of the amount of flood plain that extends through the property, is we have a, an easterly portion of property, and then primarily the western portion of the property. And that will probably be broken up into several phases. We don't know exactly how many right now, but I'm sure that it will be phased, probably on the west side, to maybe a matter of possibly two or three phases, and then potentially on the east side, maybe as one phase, we don't know for certain, but each of these areas kinda stands on its own, if you will. As far as infrastructure goes, like I said, we've got Church Road here on the north, so all the access would be coming into and out of Church Road. We've had some initial discussions with the fire department as far as fire flows, because it is industrial, and there would be a rather heavy water usage for fire flow primarily because of the industrial use. So, we have had conversation with fire department, and we are proposing 10 inch water mains throughout the entire park. That is the size of the main that's here on Church Road, there's some feeder mains here on Dixie, the water storage tank kinda sits in this real small corner of the church property, so we've had discussions with fire department, points of connection back to the 10 inch main that's on Church, points of connection between the two, east and west, point of connection back to Catalpa, and then point of connection down to Miller, so that we can loop the entire system, not only feed the business park, but also kinda loop some of the stuff that's, some of the water main system that's already in the village now, and try to loop that all in and tie that together with larger mains that feed not only our park, but other areas in the village, to kinda supplement the existing water system. Several years ago, when Mr. Van Barren's business park went into the north, there was a trunk sewer, sanitary sewer, that was run up kinda along the, in an eastern area along Trim Creek, that feeds to the north, so there is a trunk sewer that's in here now. We would be feeding all the sanitary sewer from the business park into that system, from this side over to the trunk line here, and the west side to the trunk line here. Similar to what we had designed when we looked at the residential many years ago, with the creek flowing right through the middle, we have several detention areas that would support the stormwater management for the property. Basically, everything is obviously flowing towards the creek, east and west, so we have several detention areas along the creek that will discharge to the creek in a controlled rate, controlled fashion. The amount of runoff that you would expect from industrial property is a little bit greater than residential, of course, but we have looked at the stormwater management in a conceptual and kind of a preliminary fashion right now, to know that what we've got laid out, that when we come to final design, that we would have enough room for the adequate stormwater detention to service the entire park. The railroad that's over here on the west side, this particular map right here has all the existing contours, the existing grades and land contours of the property. There's a series of contours very tight to the railroad, basically because the railroad bed and railroad rails are significantly elevated, probably would not be opportune for getting spur service in there. Not to say not possible, it's a little bit closer to grade as you get to the north, but as you get further to the south, the rail service is pretty highly elevated, so probably not gonna be rail service. It would almost, probably almost primarily be truck service coming in the park. We have prepared some covenants in conjunction and discussion with Mr. Van Barren, I believe that you've got some copies of those covenants. There would be a Business Owners Association developed for the park, that would be responsible for maintenance of the common areas, the detention areas, the undeveloped area, if you will, along Trim Creek. Of the 110 acres, there is approximately 60 to 61 acres of actual developed lots, that would be lot area itself, for usable, developable property. The remainder of the 110 acres is some roadway right of way, and primarily 50 plus acres of detention, and the Trim Creek area set aside. As Mr. Van Barren mentioned, the industrial ordinance, or industrial section of the ordinance for the village of Beecher calls for 80 foot right of way for industrial streets, with 39 foot back-to-back curb dimension, and what we're proposing is the 80 foot right of way, but even expanding a little bit further with a 42 foot right of way to the actual pavement. So, the actual, so blacktop pavement would be 39 feet, plus you've got a foot and a half curb on either side, so 42 foot back-to-back, where the village right now is calling it 39. We have cul-de-sacs, three of them shown right now, although it is possible, depending on what the users come in with, you know, we may not even end up with three cul-de-sacs. The way the lots are set up, these individual lots, that you see along the railroad and primarily down here, those are basically one acre lots. We would anticipate that on a business park like this, you might have a user come in and might purchase two lots, three lots, four lots, and build his facility, maybe on, let's say, two of the lots to start with, to have room for future expansion. So, that's, that's very common, and kind of a convenient way to set up the park, so that someone can come in now, has a, you know, an X number of square foot use right now, but anticipates growth down the road, so he can be able to do that and look forward in that regard. And that kinda goes through the entire park. What we would anticipate is starting from the north, and working our way south, so that you don't, you know, have a user down here and nothing else in between, it would be kind of a uniform progression of development, if you will. Again, going back to the covenants, and talking with the fire department, some restrictions, not restrictions, but working with the fire department, so that any use that would come in on industrial use, chemicals, that type of use, that would all have to be approved by the Beecher Fire Protection District, as well as the village of Beecher itself, so that those kind of plans would all come before both bodies, and be approved for what's actually either used, or the village has an understanding of, you know, what those uses are for fire protection, or other emergency situations that they might have in industrial park. So, kind of, in a nutshell, that's, that's what the plan is. This is conceptual right now, but we have looked at it deep enough to know that all the systems are functionable, the sanitary, the water, the storm, the road system, to be able to support the development. We are cognizant of the fact that I mentioned that there's residential over here on the east side of, or, I'm sorry, the west side of Catalpa, and on the north side of Willow, so we are proposing 30 foot setbacks along those areas. Now, when we get over to Catalpa, there's actually detention here and the creek here. The closest lot area, developable lot area on the Catalpa side would be probably right at about 300 feet, so that would be the closest building, development area that you could actually get over here, because of that, because of those environmental areas with the creek and the detention and whatnot. Over here on Willow, we do have these lots backing up, we are proposing 30 foot setbacks, 30 foot green area, as well as landscaping berms and landscaping to protect and kind of give some kind of a buffer between the residential and the industrial. Likewise, in the covenants, there's several items spelled out in there as far as lighting levels, to be night-friendly lighting, noise stipulations as far as, you know, noise limitations, and those types of other industrial environmental issues that might come up. So, those are spelled out in the covenants to protect the areas, especially the areas that are very proximate to here on the south, and that would also pertain to over here on the east, these businesses along here. So, kind of in a nutshell, that's the plan. I'd be glad to answer any questions, or any other items that we'd like to discuss.
Yeah, let's, let's start with Willow. So, how many, how many feet is there in between the edge of a homeowner's property on Willow and where the park would be? Is it just 30, or are we talking 60, or?
This is the property line, that is the backyard of the homes that are on Willow.
Right.
So, the industrial lots go all the way to the park line, it's a common property line between the residential and the industrial. What we are proposing is a 30 foot minimum, 30 foot green area, so, and in that 30 foot, there would be a four foot high berm, and then plantings or landscaping on top of that. Now, if any of you are familiar with that area, as we get closer to the east end of Willow, there is approximately four and a half to five and a half feet of grade differential, where the back lots of the residential are four and a half to five and a half feet below the grade that's here on Mr. Van Barren's property. As you get a little bit further west, it starts to get a little bit closer grade, but again, there's probably three to four feet of grade differential, where the residence, the existing residential lots are three to four feet lower than the industrial property. So, in addition to that grade differential that's already there, we would be supplementing that with a landscape berm, a four foot of earthen berm, and then a minimum six foot high landscape screen area all along that berm, to protect those residences. So, yes, it would be at least 30 feet of green area.
And it's the same with Catalpa, then, 30 feet?
Catalpa, we don't have that same issue, because, again, we have this, here's Catalpa right here, we have detention pond right here, we have detention pond right here, and we have the creek right here. So, the closest resident, the backyard closest resident from Catalpa to the actual developed area of the lots is at least 300 feet in there. So, we have a, you know, rather large buffer, and then, of course, the vegetation and growth that's currently in the creek limits, within the, not just the creek area, but the actual outside limits of the creek, there's a rather sense of vegetation through there, and all that would remain.
And then Miller?
And then Miller, we would have that same 30 foot down at the far south end of our industrial development. These lots on Miller are, those are probably at least 300 foot deep, I don't have the dimension on here. But probably north to south, those lots, those residential lots are at least 300 foot deep. There is some vegetation, actually, in the residential lot areas already, but we would be providing that buffer on the south end, provide that same landscape berm and landscape screen, to protect, and provide that buffer area for those residences.
The 10 inch water mains you're proposing to put in, what's that, is it going to be just strictly for fire, or is it gonna be for usage throughout the park?
Both, yes, it'd be fire, primarily for fire, that's why we would be running 10 inch mains. Discussions with the fire department, every building, business out here will be sprinkled. In the covenants, there's a zero square foot threshold, which means anything at all that gets constructed has to have a sprinkler system. So, everything, and that, so those 10 inch mains, that would be for both domestic and fire use.
So, is there gonna be a potential of water pressure issues if everybody's got their water on in the park at the same time, you know, for the community?
We've, we've preliminarily analyzed the system. Beecher had done a rather extensive study as far as the systems, water, and sanitary. I don't know what the date of that study is, but it's not, it's not that age. And we have analyzed and looked at those 10 inch mains, that we are able to supply the fire flow necessary. You wouldn't expect that everyone would be on at the same time, and that's typically not how that would work, but, you know, you analyze the system for maybe a hotspot here, or a hotspot here, and look at it in that fashion. So, on Miller Street, you were saying you've been at a 30 foot buffer, the berm will be four foot and six foot landscaping on top of that? Correct. So, we're at about 10 feet of... Visual, yeah, 10 feet of visual screen. Those lots on Miller are, again, they're probably at least 300 foot depth, obviously the houses are much closer to Miller, but there's a pretty significant rear yard area. It is residential, you know, we have to take that into consideration, so regardless of the fact that the houses might have a rather sense of rear yard, we still are buddy up to them, and so we have to maintain and provide those buffers.
And on Willow, that would supplement the existing grade differential, so we're talking almost 15 feet in some areas?
Yes, correct. Right.
A couple of general questions.
One, what hours are operations gonna be around the clock?
I'll let Mr. Van Barren maybe answer that question.
Say again, George.
Are, are the parks gonna be open 24 hours operating, 24 hours?
It could be, yeah, I mean, a guy has a business, he could be open all, all night if he wanted to be, but I mean, don't anticipate that with the light, light smaller business suites that could go in there, even an air conditioning guy maybe, maybe a little welding shop or something like that, they don't typically, they're not middle of the night guys, maybe electrician, maybe a warehouse for food storage, you know, they're open, like ours, we don't ship at night, a few employees working at night, but, yeah. The lion, greatly the lion's share, it's not gonna be up all day, all night there.
Do you have any asking, how many parks are becoming and developing? Do you have any asking, I was wondering how many trucks are becoming and developing?
Depends, I think there might, there's approximately fifty lots in there and we anticipate at least probably an average of two lots of businesses, maybe be a fair assumption. So, maybe a twenty, twenty-five businesses in there. Smaller businesses, I mean, they just, smaller commuter vehicles like vans and that, you know?
Well, I think the major concern is the big, the big boys coming in.
Yeah, so I think like Warren, we were talking, they'll do a little traffic study likely and they'll look at the road and make sure Church Road can accommodate it. The initial phases, it certainly is fine the way it is. We start this thing and, heck, maybe, maybe, you know, we don't sell anything, then we don't, we don't do the right, right? So, we anticipate it to go pretty well, but I don't know how many trucks would come in, can't really answer that.
Okay. But we will be...
Not thousands?
Yeah.
We will be completing a traffic study, completing a traffic study. That will be a part of the approval process.
Now, there'll be one entrance, correct?
There's an entrance over here off of church for the west and an entrance off of church on the east. None of the lots would have direct access to Church Road. They would actually have to come into the business park and then access from the interior streets.
And there's no direct road access to any of the existing residential area?
Uh, this area down here, there is a stub street to, from Catalpa up to the property line. The only connection we would make there is to the water system. No, no street connection or, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Karen Crosby, seven-one North Street, she here. Do you have anything you want, if you want to, what? Would you like to make your comments or? Do you all want to?
If, if you could come up to the podium, if you could come up to the podium, please, sorry. And just as a, and just as a reminder, please keep your comments to three minutes. There are a lot of folks here tonight and we want to make sure everybody has an hour.
Hi, sir. How you doing?
Good. I just have a question. How is, uh, how is Route One going to accommodate all this traffic considering that, you know, probably a lot of us don't work and we don't work in feature, we have to go in either directions. How is that going to affect our way of travel trying to get in and out of ourself?
We will be looking at the traffic study and again, a lot of that will have to do with timing of the light at Dixie and Church Road, um, as well as potential turn lanes on Dixie Highway. There possibly, or I'm sorry, on Church Road, there possibly, uh, might be something on Dixie, but again, it would have to do...
But it is, but it is just a one-way road with all, I'm thinking about the truck traffic, you know, and trucks move very slow.
That will be something that's looked at and that, those types of issues come out when we do the traffic study as far as number of trucks anticipated, what the traffic is there right now, which is, you know, is fairly considerable going through feature right now.
It is, yeah. Okay, but another question, um, doing this development, are you going to be tearing stuff apart as you're building things or are you going to be building and having it ready to be moved, moved in?
As far as the overall development, you mean? More than likely, uh, we might be doing the mass earthwork, um, at one shot, but as far as the infrastructure, infrastructure goes, as far as the sewer and water, uh, we would probably be coming in, phasing that. However, that all comes into play with, again, making sure that we're in coordination with the fire department to provide the required fire flow protection and fire system requirements.
Another question. What, okay, you were, what about, you saying that things aren't going to be happening a lot at night, um, who's going to regularly bat, like, if it starts to get, if people don't listen to what, what they're supposed to do, you know, if there's a lot of noise, a lot of extra trucks, a lot of fighting, a lot of all that stuff, who's going to kind of police, police that, you know, for us?
There's, there's actually kind of two layers, if you will. One is the covenants that ride with the development, but also with the PUD process and the PUD approvals, the village has, you know, their own stipulations as far as what those requirements are and, you know, if somebody's doing something late at night that doesn't meet the ordinance, then the village would police that.
The, the village takes, when you look at the lighting of the new business that was over there, the trucking business off Indiana, they put their lights up and we had a, the city made them make a few changes because they weren't in accordance with, and the neighbors weren't happy, so they watched that very closely.
Master Ed, I can't read your writing.
Andrea.
There you go.
There you go.
I think you're...
There you go. So, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and, um, the Van Barren certainly has put a lot, um, of time into this project and I want to thank Art, Artie. I thought about, as you were speaking, I decided to write a few notes of my own, so more extensive, extensive, but I thought about, you know, we cannot see the future. I think we can all agree with that, but we can prepare for the future. And with that in mind, I thought about our model. Who knows our model, our town? Crowd pass with a promising what?
Future.
Future. And now, when I came to feature thirty-eight years ago, I stood before this committee and we petitioned this committee, not these fellows here, men, but men that have gone out, I don't know, and to ask about building a church. And there were some people that were objecting to it. A church, have a church, um, in our community, it was surprising, but there was a lot of people that were favorable and they realized the assets of having a church and the value of building and of training people and changing this wicked society that we live in and the necessity they have to oblige us to being taught. And, um, we, we have stood our ground for thirty-eight years and we've been a lighthouse for this community. If you look at that little drawing, you'll notice the church is designed as a cross. I designed the church building when I was in college because when I went to college, this is when God called me to this little town of Beach, which I knew nothing about it. But I asked God that he would use me instrumentally to eunuch out of the rock and I actually dug that foundation, God wasn't here, we dug it by hand, close. And thirty-eight years, we are standing, the church is doing great. Covid nineteen didn't stop our church, our church grew during that time. Praise God, nobody got sick. So, I give praise for all my heathen. I say a couple of things, can I just briefly? It's so important, the essentials of the future are family dwellings. We all realize that we've got to have family that makes up our community. Matter of fact, when the Hunter Chase was developed, um, we approached the city and so forth about, considering about having that water tower on our property, so the six hundred, seven hundred homes will be developed for Hunter Chase. So, our church stepped up and said, yes, we'll, we'll donate that property and work with you and the blog and the pump house and all that. Our church has been contributing all these years to the building, the development of feature and that's been my sole desire, to see feature develop. And, um, and I'm glad to see now with the adjustments, impact fees coming down fifteen hundred dollars, we've simulated the economics for development. Is that good? I think it's great. I'll move on real quickly. I could reach for a while. Let me just say that, let me say this, the most important thing is we need to have family dwellings and, but we also have the essentials of commercial and industrial development. If you look at the other communities like Bonin Development Center, Mantino, Momentz, all these communities that have prospered, have developed in some kind of industrial or commercial. It'd be nice to see a restaurant on Roman's Road and, uh, so if we all have a family restaurant to go to, that would be great. The key is balance, family and industry and, uh, this is where the zoning permission, this is going to fall on your lap, the decision that you're making. I can just say, from knowing the Van Barren family, they're a good family, they're an honest family, they want to help this community, they're concerned for economic development, growth in the community and, um, they're honest, they're sincere, they're reliable developers. Art and Artie's family are interested in bettering the community. If you'll notice, um, on article fourteen B, I love this, it says, "The lot pursuant to business owner or the operator, each business, covenants, and has to make an agreement that it shall not use or permit the use of the lands or any building on the lands for any purpose associated with the gentleman's club, with exotic ants clubs, strip clubs, or any such related or similar types of use of business." That's all, his family.
They had my vote.
Let's keep this community clean.
Okay, thank you, Master.
You're welcome.
That does count for Sunday, right? Rick Crosby, uh, seven-eleven owner. I suspect you're married to Karen?
Sister.
Or a son?
Brothers and sisters.
Brothers, sisters? Any, anything like that? You got any time you want?
She was stepped out.
You stepped out? All right, moving on. Sherry Murray. Uh, Sherry, here's Sherry.
Do you want me to stay here?
Well, you can come up here.
I live at five-four-nine Willow, right in the corner there of Willow and Catalpa. I'm concerned about the hill because you're saying it's like only three to four feet, but if I stand in front of it, I gotta look, it's, it's gotta be a lot higher than that. So, I'm concerned because when it rains, my yard gets flooded. I get flooding in my garage, the stuff's in my garage turning into apricots. What's going to happen if you add another, what is it, more feet on top of that? Is it gonna, I'm gonna have even more water coming down and I hope you're planning on putting some kind of drainage between the houses and the hill or at the top of the hill and I was hoping maybe you even leveled it all so we wouldn't have a lot of water coming down.
Actually, it's good that you're that much higher because there's that much of a visual buffer, but...
Yeah.
I will say that when we did the design for the residential fifteen years ago, or somewhere thereabouts, uh, there will definitely be some type of a capture swail to capture any potential runoff so that it's collected into a stormwater system and then gets discharged to the detention basin that's over here between, uh, this section of Catalpa and, uh, Trent Creek, Trent Creek. So, there will, now, when I talk about, uh, a thirty-foot green area with a berm on it, so at the peak of the berm, you might have fifteen feet that's actually draining towards the property line, but everything else would be captured into the drainage system and then discharged. So, all this water that you have currently coming to you is, would no longer be that case. There will be storm sewers, yeah, there will be storm sewers designed as well as overland flood routes to get all that water into the detention system and then discharge to Trent Creek.
I just want to, and I, I respect that you started a business on scratch and bam, you need all this extra space, I just wish it wasn't my space. But you, I, I hope it works out for you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to, uh, come up? Can you come up on the side?
I'm just wondering, so, this is a TIF area, right?
Okay, we got to read your name. Rick Buckman?
You can.
You can? Uh, thirteen fifty-one Roman.
So, it's a TIF area, right? So, how soon does this town start gathering tax revenues from?
I'll let Mr. Van Barren answer those types of questions.
If you want to know about when the TIF revenue kicks in, that's really the TIF district that we're in, um, working with the, the planning board.
I, I can address that one. For those of you who don't know me, my name's, my name's T I O C, I'm from Tesco Associates. Uh, I've got a memo floating around out there that we got. We are the planning consultants for the village. I've been working with the, with the village for quite a few years. Uh, we helped develop the covenant plan and we helped develop the district. So, I do tons of TIFs. As far as, the TIF was just established, I'm going to say, two years ago. It takes a while for the TIF to actually start generating.
Probably will just get that in the rain on the city services?
How long is a while?
Until that kicks in?
No, I, it, it requires new development to, to generate that increment. So, you know, this particular property, you know, as long as it remains undeveloped, it's not generating any increment, it's not really, it's not affecting any of the tax districts, it's not affecting anything. As, you know, if this project gets approved, as lots are developed, you know, that will start generating increment into the fund that can then...
So, so the TIFs are based on the individual lots?
Correct.
So, as they sales, that starts date number one for the start of the TIF for the individual business?
Well, no, the TIF district runs, it runs twenty-three years. It started, like I said, I believe it was two years ago, it runs for twenty-three years. But how it, how it actually generates revenue is on a parcel-by-parcel basis, so, uh, when the TIF was established, that's kind of what we call the baseline. Any increase in property values from that baseline of two thousand and nineteen, that's what's the increment, you know, so, as I said, you know, if this property is undeveloped, it's not really generating any increment because the property values may be going flat. If the prop, if the project gets approved as each of those lots are developed, as if the building goes up, that new development will start generating increment into the fund.
Okay, all right. So, it's kind of an immediate thing, you're saying?
It takes a while. It takes a while, but it's, it's...
It's based upon when the assessment's done on the new improvements, the buildings and things like that and then the taxes have to be paid on it and then it captures that increment that's between two thousand and nineteen and whatever that present value is. So, it takes a little bit for it to hold, so...
Sure. Because then we're going to have to add police and fire services that we have to pay for in that area, so just hoping that it equalizes. And the one last thing too is so, um, you know, we have a building in the far southwest corner of Miller Street and there's, you know, the tracks and all in there. So, is there still going to be access for the railroad to get through there? Because there, there's an area, right, that the railroad uses for their access?
Yes.
So, there's going to be another?
No, the, uh, the railroad right-of-way ownership, whatever you want to call it, it's about a hundred and sixteen feet from, I think it's the center line of the rail, uh, on the east side of the rail. And that's the area that they currently use. And that's the area that they currently use when they have their service vehicles running up and down.
Doesn't that take down the whole entire?
It runs pretty much the entire length, and you'll see this little jog right here, that's actually a jog in the railroad right-of-way. There's a forty-one-foot jog right there. So, they run right up here, I don't know, I think there's, it looks like there's a little roadway incline right here, where then they're next to the rails. So, that would still remain their property, and our development would go up to that.
So, there's like a dividing berm between that access for the railroad, or?
No. There would not be any need, because it's railroad industrial property, there would not be any kind of a visual buffer area that we would have to provide next to their property. Only adjacent to the residential areas. So, what they have now for access would remain the way it is.
Okay, fair enough. All right, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I have several concerns concerning this project. My home value, nobody wants to live up against an industrial park. I moved here for a quiet town living, and so far, that's what I have. I do not want lights glaring in my backyard. There's going to be an issue with traffic to the map. You have twenty-five lots, that you bring trucks in, but Beecher's not really set up for that. You have one road coming in and out, it's gonna put a real problem for people that commute out of town. And we could maybe suggest an alternate route established, or such semis coming in. If it were later date. I just do not believe that industrial parks should be adjacent to residential areas. You can go on the south side of town, you can go on the north side of town, you can go over on the other side of the tracks. We don't want your industrial park in our backyard.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Can you move some sign in?
My name's Brian Rasmussen, I live at eight sixteen Catelpa Street. I got a question about the flooding issues, or, I mean, you say you're gonna put in sewer and all of that stuff, but I'm not a genius on any of this building stuff, but it sounds like a lot more water going toward the creek. And I don't know if you've been around the creek, and some of these big storms, but I have the luxury of being like twenty feet away from the creek, from my house. If that creek gets any higher, I'm gonna be pumping out my basement every rain. So, what kind of guarantees do I have, that this isn't gonna cause my house to become a piece of junk? I mean, like.
The Village of Beecher, because it's in Wolf County, follows a Wolf County Stormwater Ordinance, and Wolf County Stormwater Ordinance has a restricted release that's relatively stringent for both a two-year storm and a one-hundred-year storm. And I repeat this many times, when I'm giving presentations, but with the stormwater being directed to the detention basin, and a restricted release, that's substantially less than what's actually taking place on that farmland right now. Whether the farmland is bare, whether it's got snow or ice cover on it, and you're getting all that runoff at one, you know, one shot.
Or if it's all concrete.
But it's, with the development, it is first to the detention basins, and then to a restricted.
How deep are these retention basins?
Uh, probably four to five feet on average.
My other concern is, with all this nature berms and stuff, how are you gonna control the smell? I mean, make it cheese, sorry. It's not, it doesn't smell so good. I mean, westerly winds coming straight to my backyard, so am I supposed to just smell bad stuff? Industrial, like, waste coming over to my house? I mean, I got kids, I don't want, like, to poison them or something.
Yeah, the covenants and the restrictions would control those types of issues.
Yeah, you could control the smell.
The Village also has ordinances for odor noise and all of that already in their code, so those things would have to be addressed.
My last point would be, if this does go through, can we get some advanced knowledge that is coming through, so that I can get my house on the market before they see large equipment?
A lot of the previous speakers covered a lot of my points, so the ones I have left aren't that much fun. First question, and you need that answered, because it's your own business, is anyone on zoning board adjacent to this property? Who's in thought? Again, calling for twenty-five businesses. I love Beecher, it's thirty minutes away from everything. What kind of businesses wanna be there to add to where they have to go to? Getting in there, yes, but you gotta drive thirty minutes to any client other than the town. So, that's the question, is can you actually fill the park? What happens if you can't? Left with rubble, buildings, I don't know. Wondering here.
What does happen?
Potentially, what?
Everything's already destroyed. What does happen?
The jobs, I love jobs, bringing jobs is wonderful. How many of these jobs are gonna be from actual Beecher residents? Are they coming from out of town? Maybe less scrupulous people? I don't know. Don't know the industries, the businesses, so on and so forth. That. And although I appreciate your, your business and what you wanna do, and you've helped out Beecher, from what I've been told, any man who will engage in such a large project is in his or her own pocket, not necessarily to help the community. Just standing, engaged. What do we gain? Nothing, as far as I can tell. That's it.
Is there any more, anyone else?
I just have a quick question on the infrastructure, specifically the water rates. I know you guys said you did some studies on them, and that it can support the system, but I believe Miller Streets have five water rate breaks this year.
Yeah.
So, what happens when we add new flow? I'm assuming that's going to be increased pressures, and that system actually support time into it?
I had submitted a signatures that will be.
Okay, we're gonna close the over comment. And then we'll go ahead and read the slides.
This was submitted from Lori Baker, who lives on Woodworth Street. I am a lifelong resident of Beecher, having moved here in nineteen sixty-three. While I agree for a town to stay alive, some businesses need to be brought in. However, I think this is a very bad idea. I can name a handful of reasons. Property taxing one, and also it could possibly depreciate the value of homes, of one's home who is directly affected by it. There's a little strip mall where the bowling alley in Callaway Cutts is, they have a few vacancies in that strip mall. There are rental places, there's rental places in Commute's Country Corner. Premier Insurance Building has been vacant for years. Downtown, there's several buildings that are vacant. I see a lot of traffic being backed up on Route One, with semis coming in and out of Route One. Route One is a country road, which has never been intended for all these semis. The road needs to be widened, because of all of the accidents that have killed people. We do need more senior housing here, that's for sure, but we do not need an industrial park. We are not Chicago. I would like to see an Aldi come in, or a Walmart nearby. You also have to think too, with growth, from prime question. Okay, and this one comes from Kim Kousky on Gold Street, and he wanted to add that he was a former, he was a former planning and zoning commissioner in Village Tree. Planning and zoning board, analysis of this project falls into two broad categories, pros and cons for the village and its residents. In this case, I feel the pros are a very short list, and the cons are a fairly long one. The proximity to our residential area and the pure size and density of this project are highly concerned. Our current industrial park per comparison, Dutch American Way, has only about five businesses on a much smaller footprint. This park in full build-up could be ten times that large. Hundreds of employees and trucks would be a daily occurrence. The small roads and intersections involved in the area will be greatly taxed. Visually, no industrial park enhances an area. Large spurs, steel buildings are the norm, and a hodgepodge in styles and sizes usually involved. Light industrial zoning is a broad category that will allow many types of businesses into the park. The only real restrictions are size and being non-consumer. Once zoning is approved, and the overall project is okay, the village will have no further say of when companies go into the park, as long as they comply with the zoning requirements. The village will be responsible for water and sewer, as well as fire and police. Are there revenues to offset these costs? If so, specific details should be presented. My general conclusion is that this park does not fit for the area being considered. Previous land use maps and growth plans did not look to this area for industrial development. While all projects deserve consideration, this one, in its present form, is not a good thing. This one is from Marie and Brian Keros. It is with much concern that I am writing this letter to the village officials of Beecher, Illinois. My husband and I moved to Beecher in two thousand and eighteen. Our decision to move to Beecher was mainly to enjoy the more quiet country-style, small-town atmosphere that Beecher offers. We have spent significant money on updating our home to bring increased value, not only our residents, but our community. We are aware that landscaping, dwelling condition, and personal behavior impact the homes around us. It was a sad day when we received the letter dated July sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, from the Village of Beecher, indicating that an industrial park was proposed directly behind our property. This is not what we came to Beecher for. We have now put on hold some of our exterior improvements due to this proposal. We do not want to throw away money. The current condition of our home is acceptable, however, new siding would make it that much better. Industrial park building and business district zoning changes are the reason why we left the area where we moved from. We were eyewitnesses of the negative impact this type of development inflicts on a neighbor of course. At first, we experienced increased traffic and noise, garbage seagulls equal garbage birds, and lighted parking lots disturbed our nighttime hours, turning them to day. We attempted to sell our home with a significant decrease in value, and received multiple offers worthable to the actual value of our home. Due to the loss in value, the residential homes around us, residents began to rent their homes, which brings a whole new set of negative issues to the community. This again impacted the community with continuing loss of value. Renters do not contribute to the community in the ways that an occupied homeowner would contribute to the community. We again attempted to sell our home again with much difficulty, due to the industrial and types of businesses that were moving in, and finally sold our property at a significantly lower price than what we would have expected. Since moving to Beecher, my husband and I contribute to the community by shopping, patronizing the local businesses, including restaurants, current care, licensed and bonded contractors associated with Beecher, and try to support local businesses as much as possible. We are still getting acclimated to our surroundings, and feel that an industrial park would result in significant negative outcomes in the residential area in our town. There is an abundance of property outside the town limits, away from our homes, that could accommodate this type of development, but not in our backyard. I do not want to hear idling trucks, increased road traffic, honking horns, backup alarms on trucks, increased nighttime lighting, smell of gasoline or fuel, noise pollution, and smells from standing water from retention cotton. I do not want to see our children playing in our backyards across from an industrial type of business. There is not a large enough buffer to protect our neighborhood from significant devaluing, and there is great concern for the safety for our families. We do not feel that this proposal is incompatible, this proposal is incompatible for our backyard, nor our residential community. Another impact to our community would be danger itself. An industrial park would attract unwanted road feet and large garbage birds in our backyard. This would decrease the smaller bird population and more antel's roaming, as we would expect in our backyard. We would have to seriously consider moving from Beecher if this development moves forward. This is from Shirley Fernhauer on Country Lane, to the Beecher Signing and Zoning Commission. The location for the proposed Deliana Crossroads Business Park is not a good location due to the established residential areas surrounding it. The safety of our residents should be a prime concern. This industrial park will mean more semis on our already overloaded Route One. Also, church road will be deteriorating at a more rapid pace due to the increased semi-traffic. Another safety concern is what will be stored in these facilities. As we have read in the past once or two of industrial fire explosions in factories in residential areas, causing evacuations and concerns over air and water quality. The authorities in these accidents were not aware of what was stored in these facilities, and that occurs when businesses move in and out. Also, consider the noise pollution to the local residents, trucks idling day and night, dirt and debris blowing around in the residents' yards, garbage and litter blowing out of dumpsters and through the neighborhood. Again, this proposed industrial park boarding residents is not a good location. I am- I am not anti-industry as I work at an industrial facility, but it was out in an open area, not in between residential homes. Okay. So, uh, I received this letter. The residents of the village of Beecher, as indicated on the attached petition, are not in favor of an industrial park in our neighborhood, as indicated in the letter from the village dated July sixth, twenty twenty-one. Please take consideration for the families of the community and our opposition to such developments adjacent to our homes. And it was signed, uh, United Residents. And the petition was Beecher, Illinois, Industrial Bill, Stop the Bill Petition. And it had eighty-seven signatures. This one was received from Adam Ferguson. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I moved to Beecher in two thousand four. One of the biggest reasons for moving here was the peace and quiet, the school system, and the wonderful people in town. I am against this industrial park for many reasons, such as noise and smell, and of course, the property value which will go down. I do have one question, Mrs. President. I actually bought your house on Kotelpa and I will ask you if you would like this industrial park if you were still living here. I think not, so please vote no. I would much rather have homes for a walking cat than anywhere. And lastly, from Charles Honeck. I moved to Beecher around two thousand six. A year or two after moving here, I received a proposed drawing of a residential park with homes that were going to possibly be built on the property just west of my property in the proposed industrial site that we talked about tonight. I was fine with that. If this property is now zoned industrial, when, when was it changed? And was any notice given to the surrounding occupants for a zoning change? There is plenty of land available west of the River Crack, away from residents, that an industrial park can be built, and Beecher will get the taxes from it. My neighbors and myself do not want the noise, smell of diesel from trucks, smells from manufacturing, et cetera, et cetera, and the fact that our property value will go down. That's all I have. Weispan? Jackson Horst?
Yes.
Service?
Yep.
Sudama?
Yes.
Heim?
Yes.
Hearn?
Yes.
Bouchard?
Yes.
Okay. So, are there, does the board have any more questions?
Well, I hear a lot of talk about property values going down. Have any, any studies on that? Will the property values actually go down or increase?
I'd have to do a little research.
If you want to talk, you need to go out, please.
I could do some research on that for you. In general, new development has a positive impact on property values. I'm not gonna say specifically, you know, light industrial, um, next to existing one. I can't tell you off the top of my head that one. I'd have to look at some, some, uh, I'm sure there's some studies out there.
And you're on a workbeat of all the projects you've been involved with, all the other communities? And stuff like that, any figures like that?
You know, like I said, in general, new, new development is, has a positive impact on property values. Obviously, there's some, you've got my memo that I, that I put forth where I went through all the criteria. I did speak to, you know, obviously, we want to have some kind of, one of my main concern in my memo was the impact on the existing properties, on the existing residential properties. That was written before, um, those covenants were developed. So I want to take a closer look at that, but, uh, that's what I was looking for, some type of a buffer between the residential and the, uh, and this proposed development, whether the, you know, a berm, landscaping. We had a meeting with, uh, with the petitioners a couple of weeks ago, where we were discussing executives. How high of a berm can they get in that space? You know, do we want some kind of fence? Fence or landscaping be more appropriate as far as helping to protect visually as, as well as in light levels? Like I said, those covenants weren't done at, at the time I wrote this memo. I believe there are provisions in those covenants called light levels for architectural review. I think there was a, some kind of committee in there to, to look at architecture, lighting, uh, as well as most previously mentioned, um, uh, noise and odor. There's existing regulations and regulations regarding that. And I believe there are also some provisions in those covenants, specifically which types of uses would be permitted and which types of uses would not be permitted. Obviously, heavy industry is certainly not appropriate, you know, adjacent to, to residential. We're talking more light industrial warehousing type things. And obviously, we can address those as a board as far as the types of uses they require.
These documents are available to the public for evidence. The covenants, obviously, the village zoning ordinance, the plan documents. So, I mean, I believe that a lot of the concerns that I heard this evening are addressed in these documents. So, but they're probably available.
Anything to be done, uh, to the architectural works?
Well, that was another, that was another thing that I, that I pointed out in my memo as far as, uh, my concerns with the, with the trucks were twofold. One was, you know, internal circulation as far as trucks being able to circulate through and fire trucks, we addressed that on a staff one whole time. I think that's been addressed. But as the petitioners mentioned, well, yeah, I'd like to see that.
More important questions? Would the board be, uh, agreeable to, to get a little more information on this before we decide to pass another recommendation?
Well, I'd like to initial, like, church street home, that is a matter. You have added, so the, the board, that they need to look at that. I, I think that's something I would be very looking at.
As a advisor, I think it's our responsibility.
Yeah, I agree.
That's, that's not necessarily something you receive at this level. This is an exploratory proposal, so you're saying generally, generally.
Yeah.
You're either in favor of this or you're against this. And so that recommendation of what the board's saying, we're generally in favor of this, has kind of proposed with this industrial beauty, or we're against it. Now, there's a lot of details that still have to go into it. If you would be in favor of it, including all of the utilities, the road access improvements to Church Road, the traffic study, how it goes to Dixie Highway, all the, you know, water capacity, storm, all of that has to be done. But if it's not in favor of, then they can kind of stop the brakes on spending money on that because you're saying we're not generally in favor of it. So, that, that's kind of what you're, I mean, and you can always defer if you need additional information, you know, or something was, you know, presented today that you have not heard previously or something else, you can always defer also to receive that, that you would not receive the traffic study. Now, you can certainly make comments that you have concerns about the traffic. Generally, you might be in favor of it, but you have concerns about traffic. You want to know more about the screen and how that would work in relation to the residential, et cetera. Stormwater, again, anything that you, as board members of the party, have to consider, have to be appropriate.
Well, then we're, make a consideration to, uh, descend down to the board as this exploratory proposal preliminary, uh, the proposed business. And this motion can include, uh, conditions, uh, that would be placed on this?
Well, I don't think we're in a position to put conditions on it. I think either generally, to me, there appear that you should look at sort of, in general, there's a lot of unanswered questions, and I think those need answered. And I think, you know, I think we should do it that way. Come into the board, saying in general, we're not opposed to this, but we need, you know, other stuff needs to be looked at. So, I mean, obviously, this is very preliminary at this point, so there's not a lot of, you know, some of the things that we're really needing, that I would need, aren't there at the moment. But in general, I don't have opposition to this in general, as long as, you know, there's proper lectures.
Please, this, the public comment, don't worry.
One, one question, so, because, can we put in our concern with church and, uh, traffic study and all that? And then if we, or the board, they would handle?
They would handle the rest of.
It'll come back to you. This is, this is what's called a plan development. It's governed by, uh, you know, plan development regulations and the zoning ordinance. This is the initial concept stage. There's still preliminary, well, this is kind of concept and preliminary, and then there's still final approval that's gonna, so you're gonna send this to the, either send this to the board with a positive or negative recommendation. If it's a positive rec, and then if the board gives a positive recommendation, it'll still come back to you again for a final approval, where at that point, you'll have to have all of those details worked out for final approval.
All right.
Well, then, good, I mean, that's kind of what we're looking for.
So, is there a motion?
Let's pass, and we'll make the motion, uh, based on being, uh, preliminary and, uh, we saw the individual.
Bouchard?
Yes, so just for clarification, so there would be a number of recommendations to the village board on the proposed exploratory proposals subject to these plans that would involve, well, with the information that you requested.
Right, yeah, correct. There's a lot of questions, so we may not get answers for that, which that will come later. All right.
Bouchard?
Yes.
Hearn?
Yes.
Heim?
Yes.
Sudama?
Yes.
Service? Jackson Horst?
Yes.
Weispan?
Yes.
Thanks, Charlie, you got me?
It's not just your talent. Good job.
Um, consideration of appointment of chairman vice chairman for coming year, I think, for those.
Yeah, you know, he knocked on wood. And you're only three years old.
What do you expect, something for the private compound? About Bob, what, you're, it's kind of.
It's an effect.
So that's finally, you're back to older horns all night long. Other than that, I mean, I hear a lot of me out here. Well, goodness, uh, without Bob.
Any other motion, Mr. Trump?
Second.
Weispan?
Yes.
Jackson Horst?
Yes.
Service? Sudama? Heim?
Yes.
Hearn?
Yes.
Bouchard?
Yes.